Fill some water. Cause a mess.
Do you want to begin the finance committee meeting? Mr. President, you flip.
Do we need call to work? We are calling to work.
Mr. Joseph, tonight's finance committee meeting is going to consist of a brief overview of the budget and its current state development with emphasis on sort of Peasers allegations. And then we're going to talk about the switchgear a little bit. Mr. Joseph.
Okay, to get started, we want to review the eighteen ninety budget with, at the next board meeting, we're going to have to get into approval of where we're at at that point. The budget's still a work in process. Not too much has changed at this point besides some of the savings we added in at one point. Like I said, I'm currently working on, on things with the budget, so by the May fourteenth or fifteenth, whatever that actual date is, that board meeting will have it ready to be voted on, so we can advertise that budget at this point.
Hey Chris, if I could pause you quickly. So for the board, May we have to pass a preliminary budget, Bill, there's an official name, preliminary...
Preliminary budget, that'll work.
Preliminary, there's a preliminary budget we have to pass.
There is a different name for it now, but that's what it is.
And then the final budget has to be passed in June. We have to have thirty days from the time the preliminary budget's passed until the final budget's passed.
A number just kicked in, I believe it's the proposed final budget, followed by the final budget.
That makes sense, yeah. Do you want to try and write to you, Chris?
Quote, build up. Yes.
Sorry, Chris, go ahead.
So, as you can see, we're around the same place as we were, pretty much exactly the same, twenty-seven point six in revenue, twenty-eight point four million in expenses. The percentages break out, and you can see where our revenues, they stay consistent with the sixty percent local taxes. Big part of that's real estate taxes, the local income tax, thirty-one percent from the state government, and three percent from the federal. As we know, a lot of our budgeted expenses, seventy-three percent is salary benefits. So our fund balance, excuse me, our fund balance with, the numbers becoming more actual for seventeen, eighteen, I would look at the end at about the one point four three million mark after, I think we were at about one point three last time.
I was gonna say, can I make a request that for the next iteration of this, could we put the actual fund balance as of the end of last year, while we have confirmed numbers?
Yes.
And then an estimated...
Yes, when we're getting close, it won't be quite confirmed, because we haven't went through the audit and the year end hasn't closed, but it's much estimated actual.
We'll have the seventeen number, we'll have the audited seventeen.
The seventeen, yes.
And then we'll have a potential eighteen.
Right, and we have that later on.
And then a...
Right. See where we're at right now.
Because if we're talking about a budget of a seven hundred thousand dollar deficit, or five hundred thousand dollar deficit, and we only have a million four, we're gonna understand we make people nervous, so, okay.
Chris, I'm thinking that last year, the salary... Closer to seventy, did it go up or is it...
Well, we have a lot of folks raises, jump steps. We have more jump steps than we do higher salaries going out, and then the Peasers, the Peasers bumps a little bit, even though it's a percentage, it's one percent on all these new salaries that are higher, too. So, you know, it all works its way in there. Big pain is, we continue to say, is the pension crisis. It is what it is at this point. We're going to continue, the percentage evens out, but as our salaries go up across the board, you could say the percentage is leveling out, but the cost of the Peasers is going up. It just continues to kind of skyrocket for us, and with some of our major jump steps coming up in the next five years, that's going to continue to go up, as you see the Peasers percentage goes up. As you see, over the next five years, we're going to go from thirty-three point four three to an estimated thirty-six point three two. So, three percent jump with, you know, what we're going to have in salaries adding up, turns into a major increase for us.
But Chris, again, just to put in context, we came from four and a half. So, four and a half percent instead of thirty, so that the immense pain that we felt is slowing, it's still a huge number, but it's...
It's continuing to bump, though. I wouldn't say either...
The percentage is not going to continue to bump, it's flattening right now.
Right, but our expense is going to continue to bump, based on what we have...
If our people cost continues to go up, then...
Which, that's the projection over the next five years.
But not, not the way it has for the last five, like, the last five years have been...
Well, yeah, you had your original bump, but being that we have positions going up to their top level across the board, that's, that's a real killer, so even though that percentage bumps, your cost really...
They'll inch up as our personnel cost inches up, but we're not going to see an increase like we had last five years.
I guess, I guess what he's trying to emphasize is, it's almost getting to be irrelevant about the climb, even with the tapering off, because we're so high and we have X amount of people that are jumping with the jump step, at their cost, high salary, which is huge population, it's a big, it's already a big expense first, that's eating a chunk of our budget.
Right, right.
So, it's, in the past couple of years, it hasn't even been the climb that's eating the chunk of our budget. That big chunk of budget remains and continue to keep growing, because we have such a huge...
And it's a combination of both, because, you know, you start the climb and it really hits you first, wow, but then you have, you know, twenty employees getting forty, you know, we're in that forty thousand dollar range, and twenty employees, so thirty-three percent of that forty thousand, it's, you know, we're over twelve, twelve to fourteen thousand dollars, times twenty over the next five years, and that's a consistent set cost, so...
My point is, as you went, as, as we had a four hundred thousand dollar contribution to pension in twenty eleven, we're now at three and a half million. That's the bulk of the pain. Yes, we're going to go up, and yes, it's not going away.
The only problem is, it's that consistent pain.
Agreed, yeah, I'm just saying, it's not going to go from three and a half to eight.
Right, but it's...
Like it's...
Three point one more million dollars into our budget than we ever had to deal with over this past timeframe. So, it's like we said, the, the jump steps, that leads to, that, that adds to it, so, yeah, just have to keep budgeting for it. As we now have increased burdens on school districts, I think we've discussed this all right now, one way to look at for every million dollars in salary, and this is all employees across the board. That's three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars with that thirty-three percent, so maybe that kind of can give people a realization of how much money we are funding on every million dollars, and as we said, look how much we have in salaries, so I think we're around the twelve million mark. So, that's without salary and benefits, so you have twelve million, three, thirty, four on every million dollars, adds up. That increase is a standout for the next five years, so, like we said, we just discussed that. And kind of the final note is, the pensions, the way they're paid out, really doesn't matter, but it's a lot, the highest three years of the salary, not the last three, so that's a good thing to remember with all of this. This is just kind of a chart here, I think it might look familiar, but just explains kind of the member contributions, how those kind of inch their way up, the employer contributions, how they've had them to load, and then how much our benefits and expenses and whatever over that timeframe, so you can see just the big jump up to the, over the four point five million. Clean this chart up a little bit with, and you can see the rates, as Jim was talking about here, okay, we were four point seven six, but as you can see, there was that steady hike as we kept going up. Looks to be, doesn't appear to be going down by estimations at this point, and as I've said, that, you know, the higher salaries get, the higher that burden becomes. Okay, and then, this was a breakout, I'm, I stuck with one of the charts that we're in previous presentation. As you can see, there's not a ton that are over a hundred, but when you take seven hundred eighty-three people that are over a hundred, you know, you're getting into seventy-eight million dollars, I believe, with it, and, but even though the ones under twenty, times that by the one, one hundred and thirteen thousand employees, the numbers get pretty high, too. So, I mean, you're talking billions of dollars in this whole pension system because of the labor crisis, it's what, because of the underfunding. So, you know, that's, gives you a big picture of everything there.
The quick takeaway for me was that the pension is not a, it's not a Cadillac plan, like we've heard defined in the past, it's really a relatively modest pension, but it's still a pension, and its, its numbers are huge for us, but it's not...
It's a pretty good one, that.
From, from the standpoint of what the average person has for retirement...
On the rest of the world.
You're absolutely right, but it's, their payouts are...
But what I will say is, you know, you come into a school district, when you compare a pension for, you know, a school district or some other state employees with what we have, I mean, that's a very attractive bonus, to working in a district, you know, it helps you make a decision where, you know, some of the trade-offs, you know, you go into private versus public, but, you know, I had a gentleman explain what you would have to put into a retirement to get out what you would at a top level of a salary, so, certain, you know, areas within a school district, and it'd be very tough to save that much, you know, if you gave me a number around two million, you would have to save over the lifetime to pull the pension out, you'd be able to pull up to when you're in a top area, times your percent. So, I mean, it's a pretty, pretty good plan. Okay, charter school costs, this is a huge cost for this, and this is something we don't have a ton of control over, but it's an area where we could pull money out, where Peasers, we're kind of stuck, it is what it is, there's not much control over this, but we can really look into students, you know, we have to have our team that handles charter schools and enrollment, really, really stay up to date on the truancy, foul site patients for students that aren't, you know, a lot of the problems we have are absentees and such, and we can pull everyone back, because everyone's in for different reasons. It might be beneficial, because say, if you're an Olympic level gymnast, you don't have time to go to school, but that cyber school such allows them flexibility, so, but there are students out there, and one of the things I wanted to point out, we just received a bill, and they've upped us from the thirteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars to fourteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars per regular ed student, and the special ed, we're going to go from twenty-seven thousand up to over twenty-nine thousand. So, anybody that we'd be able to pull back in based on certain, certain situations at that time, you know, that's something we really have to look into. And then the other thing, as we've discussed at length over the past few board meetings, is the energy saver project. We have to budget for facility upgrades, because certain things, at some point, these need done, so there's not much of a choice, if something breaks down, say the switchgear goes, we're shutting down school for a timeframe. So, how do we work that into the budget? That's certain things we have to stay aware of. Couple additional issues. Act one, that will limit the amount of revenue districts can raise on their own. Then here's all the other, all the other things we have to pay for, for student services, such as the McKinney-Vento homeless transportation, that's on us, ELL services for students. Special education, if any, for the special education, once again, transporting all these students, paying out to schools, you know, that, that per child fee, tax collection rate, we only have so much control over that, as we know, it's very difficult to go much over the index rate. But also, our ability to appeal the property tax, I know that's been a big concern for Dr. Pfeiffer, Stu, where we can't argue it, if it goes through, they appeal it, we have no way to fight back on it, so...
Chris, go back to previous screen, too. Now, regarding with charter schools, we are aggressively going after the charters, we're issuing money based on attendance, that is, kids who, you know, were responsible for keeping track of kids when they were in the charters, we had kids that aren't going. So, we're going, we're getting money back from charters, we just had a check, I believe, from this TA cyber...
Yes.
For a kid that had a law that we got to them, and the kid was assigned a Montor, and we're just getting billed for it, work with them to get monies back from that. So, we're trying to monitor on that, and ideally, if we go down the road and get everyone to start charter school, we have to bring more of those kids back, and we're looking at a pilot class in that next year. But that's something we're trying to fight, and Sandy Eaton's really been doing a nice job with that, our new registrar, on getting those out. If you could go to the next slide, real quick. Two things I want to point out with McKinney-Vento and ELL, that ELL's English language learners, as you know, we had a lot of kids come this past year from Syria, and from Yemen, and some Middle Eastern, Iraq, and some other Middle Eastern countries. That could slow down, or that could spike up again, depending on what's going on. So, right now, it's down a little bit from where it was earlier in the fall. Most of those kids are living with Part Eight, and we have to keep an eye on how we're handling that. We get our ELL services from the intermediate unit, so we see money back from that, because not only do we pay for the instruction, but all the testing, all the resource materials that go with that, if we did in-house, we'd still have to go to the IED, we've got additional money. So, we work with them on that. McKinney-Vento with homeless, we've been doing better this past year than we did the prior year, with less kids that are, say, homeless, and they want to go to a school of their choice, and, you know, if they got displaced in their Imperial, and we're still bringing them here, because they have the ability to go to that school, we have to provide transportation. The one year, we had kids in Monroeville, we had kids in the city, we had kids in Imperial, so we're thriving, we're thriving from quite a distance. A lot of districts will work with us, they're working with Ginny Hunter-Clarion, transporting a kid, they'll split the cost, but again, that, that varies. So, when we say that some of those things we can't control, we get some bubbles there, and we sort of base it on what we spent over the last year. The other issue is maintenance of effort, you know, we think we're getting money back for special education, because we've had some kids graduate that have had AIDS, and we anticipate, from talk with Dr. Anna, we get about ninety cows coming back from that, because those kids have graduated and exited the ride of use. But, again, I could have a student come in that needs two individual one-to-one aids, and have a combination of physical and intellectual disability, and we would have to assume that, we wouldn't have a choice in it. A lot of times, we don't know some of these numbers until July, or August, when kids make last good decisions to come to school. So I just wanted to comment on that as you were going through, Justin.
So with our proposed budget, we were able to raise up the point nine eight bills, so we'll have to, we'll vote on that at some point to verify it. That takes us up to the twenty-three point five millilitrate for the school district. I, I left the, left the cost discretionary spending at zero right now, because we are still working through the budget, we've made some savings. Now, this seven hundred and thirty-one K, Mr. Riley put in a hundred thousand our fund balance reserve, so that hundred thousand is part of that, so we're really at about six hundred and thirty-one K, but I wanted to show that seven thirty-one K with that hundred thousand dollars in our funded terror reserve.
That hundred thousand, is that the same hundred thousand we typically have in, just...
Yes, yeah, you're just leaving it, so...
We should just think of that as truly seven thirty-one, because that's...
Yes, yes, but, in case, great class, in case of emergency, type of... So, as we stated earlier, estimated fund, fund balance at one point four three by the end of nineteen school year, and then, you know, some of our goals, we have to control cost, and really minimize the impact with the students on what sacrifices we would have to make as far as that goes, but, you know, we'll continue to do our best as far as that goes, continue to find things as much as possible. We've even had some simple things with Joe Riddella and I, in technology, we sat down with the printer company, they said these bills don't look right, we argued with them, I said, hey, not argued, but went through with the gentleman, and hey, look back a couple bills, they were able to find six thousand dollars in refunds, just off that. And he goes, we're good, we can adjust your bill, well, let's go back another three months from when we started with you, because if this was a problem before, it's probably still, it was probably, you know, probably the whole time. So, you know, we're doing those things to stay money, you know, you know, everything, and Mr. Mantich mentioned some contracts he made for books, they send us out eight years over a four-year payment, we're repaying four for six, I believe, so, I mean, we have some people really working for schools, so we don't have to sacrifice much.
Chris, if you could go back one slide, real quick, the, so the one, the fund balance, if it's, if you're guessing, estimating one point four at the end of next year, the seven hundred thousand dollar deficit this coming year, that means our, your estimated fund balance at the end of this year would be two point one, two point two?
It would be two point one six seven.
There you go, sorry, go ahead.
That's okay, and this is just kind of an overview, made that chart similar to previous, as you can see, we, we just kind of go through here, it's, I can email this to everybody if you want a closer look, I know these numbers are kind of small to see from where everybody's at, but it just gives the basis, it tells us our local, or state, or federal, so it's not just saying percentage, you see the actual number, you see where, where the salaries are hitting us, and where I said, you know, we're at about twelve million dollars in salaries, so you have thirty-three percent, then thirty-six percent, and those salaries are going to be even higher, because of the number of jump steps over the next five years. So, and then just some of our other costs, um, right now, we don't have anything to budget for any capital expenditures at this point, but the nice thing about that is, one of the reasons we don't, because if that energy saver project comes in now, it should be money we get back a little bit with our utility bills, energy bills and such, so, you know, that's a nice project we're working, working towards. That sums up this presentation, if there's any questions on that.
Chris, this was a lot to adjust, I would assume you're going to email us.
Yes, I'll email the presentation to everyone, and then, if you have questions, you can email, give me a call, I'm not going too far, so, I'm, I'm around, and I think those that have emailed me, I get back to you, so, you know, try to do so in a timely effort.
If I could suggest, then, that we, the next two items that we had refine, if we address that in the regular meeting, because I know we have students here from seven o'clock for recognition, and then I can talk about Title One, and you can talk about the switchgear, we'll bug talk on that, but I think if we include that, and then get into student recognition in the regular meeting, then we can hit and run with this.
Chris, the presentation's good.
Thank you.
Any, any questions on the presentation before he shuts it down?
And we'll, we'll also make this available on the website this morning.
Final version?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Need that on...
Is that distracting the late opera?
No. It's just blurry to me, without my glasses on. I'm not distracted. And that concludes the finance committee meetings this evening.
The April sixteenth, twenty eighteen, meeting of the Convent School to Support Directors is called to order. Chris, do you mind leading us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, in the name of this God, with liberty, justice, and...
Secretary, please call the roll.
Director Hontar.
Here.
Director Vendoza.
Here.
Director O'Brien.
Here.
Director Richardson.
President.
Director Simcic.
Here.
Director Zlatsky.
Here.
Director Apple.
He's not able to be here tonight.
Director Shiger.
Here. I'll entertain any public questions that people have on items that are on our agenda for tonight. Does anyone have a question about an agenda item? Seeing no questions, we'll move on. Dr. Pfeiffer, is there a presentation today?
Yes. We'd like to recognize some student athletes, and some student accomplishments, and I'd like to begin that by introducing Mr. Locke.
Thank you. Could I have you guys come up, please? Eddie and Owen, please? I'm proud to recognize these two young athletes this evening, because of their accomplishments in their respective sports. Not only have they represented their teams well, but they performed well individually, and it is a tribute to their hard work in everything that they do in the school. This morning, when I was driving in, I actually passed one of the athletes here, Eddie, when he was doing his morning run on his way to school. And it's work ethics like that that led Eddie to, in the one hundred and thirteen weight class division, a section runner-up, fifth place in the Whitfield Wrestling, and a sixth place in the Southwest Regional, and advanced to the state tournament. So, the hard work and dedication's paid off, and I want to congratulate him. It's better than... Owen also demonstrated some success in the bowling this year. Owen qualified regional qualifier, section qualifier, and advanced to the... In advance to the regionals for bowling, and he had a one ninety average.
Don't get on him.
So, if we have the faculty student bowl, I think, congratulations.
At this point, with presentations, what, you know, one of the things that we look to do is provide opportunities for kids to have access to rigorous courses through their own effort, inclination, and interest, and discuss that as acceleration, so that the more kids are exposed to higher level work, and the more opportunity they'll have upon graduation. And talking about acceleration tonight, some of the things we've been working on are Dr. Handler and Mr. Mantich. Dr. Handler.
Thank you. In your board package, we've kind of provided with two documents, one is the procedural guidelines for our acceleration, and the second one is a kind of a working package, if somebody's... Yeah, that one right there, that would be the one they would work through, provide data, give us the information to perform, we'll talk about, more about that second one. Anyway, we did these guidelines and procedures that were developed in order to help us meet the intellectual developmental needs of our students, by offering constructional programming capable of challenging them to achieve at their highest level. After visits, we made the other school district, Dr. Handler and Dr. Pfeiffer went to Quaker Valley at one point, and Dr. Handler and I went down to IED one, and we had some meetings down there, and we looked at some other school districts' policies, and we kind of modeled ours kind of after a school district we knew had already had a TDE-approved program, so we kind of started, you know, looking at that one, kind of developing ours under that particular guideline. This protocol provides direction for the district and subject, course, and grade level acceleration as an intervention for providing challenging educational opportunities for advanced learners, as identified within Chapter One. To clear up some confusion people have between acceleration and enrichment, we've defined acceleration as a moderation of the regular classroom curriculum that enables any student, and that would include ELLs, at-risk, economically disadvantaged, gifted, and twice or multiple exceptionality students, to progress either faster, and complete courses quicker in less time, or in an early age. In other words, acceleration correlates to students' educational placement with their mastery level, and not necessarily their chronological age. So acceleration opportunities, we're looking to provide them not limited to the moving through the curriculum at a faster pace, advanced grading placement, the grade placement, these core academic areas, and earning college credit while still in high school. This protocol provides guidance in this area, so we can make sure that the students, there is a need for these particular students for acceleration, and not just the one in that particular area. So if students are put through the process and are recommended for acceleration, we will focus on providing these students with challenging enrichment activities within their current classrooms, that will also meet their intellectual developmental needs of these particular students. So now, Dr. Handler's going to go through some of the criteria, and steps for identification.
Now, this is for all students, this is not just for students who are already identified as gifted students, that process will take place through the GIP process. This is for all students, not just those that are identified as gifted. But some of the criteria that we're going to be looking at, it's going to consider single subject acceleration, when the student is performing at least one or more years above their current instructional level. So, for example, they're in fifth grade, and they're performing sixth grade work pretty well, that, that is one of the students that will be considered. And also showing an aptitude for performing two years above that grade level as well. So we want to make sure they're ready to perform at that level. So some of the criteria that we'll be looking at is demonstration need based on already interventions happening in the classroom, they're already excelling above and beyond what's happening in their current classroom. Also, ESSA scores, are they performing within ninety-five percentile, if they're available? And as we go up, those kids getting to the high school years, we're all now looking at Peasants, are they performing beyond their Peasants? In that specific subject that we're looking at. Additionally, CDT, which is the classroom diagnostic testicles, that students already perform at, P-GAS projections with moderners and measures growth, as well as a review of curriculum-based assessments, demonstration mastery in those assessments, and then also the grade level of which they would be performing at. So again, going back to that fifth grade example, say they were looking at accelerating them through sixth grade math, looking at an end-of-the-year sixth grade assessment, and how that's... now looking at P-stems, or they're performing beyond from their P-stems in that specific subject that we're looking at. Additionally, CDT, which is the classroom diagnostic test tools that students already perform at, P-gas projections with monitoring and measures growth, as well as a review of curriculum-based assessments, demonstration mastery in those assessments, and then also the grade level at which they would be performing at. So again, going back to that fifth grade example, say they were looking at accelerating them through sixth grade math, looking at an end-of-the-year sixth grade assessment and how that student performs. Additionally, they also must express and show the sincere desire to want to be accelerated, that it's not, uh, my teacher thinks I should do it, so therefore I'm going to have to do it. But if they want to, if they want to do it, they want to learn more. The district acceleration committee, which will be comprised of the billion levels, it's going to be comprised of the principal, the student's teacher, the guidance counselor, as well as one of the school psychologists. They will look at quality and evidence of social-emotional maturity, academic motivation, and persistence for class completion, and a tense interest in the specific academic area as well as their attendance. And how this process will take place is that a referral will be made by the teacher or a parent can make that referral. The team will work through that workbook of data, look at going to students' data information, and if they meet those criteria over seventy-five percent, then they'll move on to the next level. And that next level would be an assessment called the Iowa Acceleration Scale. And that scale measures aptitude for acceleration above and beyond their current chronological age and grade level. Once a student meets a certain scale on that, then an acceleration plan will be developed based on the team's recommendations and then monitored on a weekly, regular basis that it doesn't set a student up for failure but success. That is the part, the process we're going to work through with that. The Iowa Acceleration Scale, a new assessment we're working with, and that is in one of the new assessments that a lot of school districts in the areas are looking at for acceleration, because it's that aptitude piece that has always been missing. Mr. Mantich?
Yeah, Dr. Randler, I'm going to make sure that since this is the P.S.S.A. system, we also talk about how this will affect the students and the P.S.S.A.s, because PDE policy dictates a student takes the grade-level P.S.S.A. for the grade to which they are enrolled in. So let's say, for example, we have a student who would get a course-level acceleration, not a grade-level acceleration. Those still, for example, right now we have a student who's in second grade taking third-grade math. Okay, so he was, he was course-only accelerated. Since he's enrolled in second grade, he will not take the third-grade P.S.S.A. this year. So next year when he's in third grade, he'll be taking fourth-grade math, he will end up taking the third-grade P.S.S.A. because that's the grade he's enrolled in. Now, if we would do whole-grade acceleration, we take the whole student, for example, from sixth grade, and skip the entire grade level, go to seventh grade, he's now enrolled in seventh grade, so he'll take the seventh-grade assessments because that's what we've dictated he's enrolled in. So just so we're clear, that when the assessments come into play, that's how they would, they would, they would play out. So that's kind of what we wanted to talk about, is highlighting on our particular policies we have here today. So if you have any questions, we'd be more happy to answer them.
I'm, I'm curious. Experience from other local districts, what are the things that they found that they liked, that they really think are working well, and what are some things that maybe they didn't expect, but what, what problems have they experienced with acceleration?
Change in culture. That was, that was the biggest piece that I got from Quaker Valley, was a change in thought process. It, they phrased it as educational goodies, per se. Take removing that label, like you have to be a certain area or certain label to have, be able to experience those education opportunities. When you open up for all students, it changes the framework and getting people to realize that that is needed for the students, that all students can accelerate and all students can excel at a higher level. Basically, that was the most difficult, was getting that thought process to change.
Thought process for the teachers, for the kids, for the parents, or?
All, all of the above. All of the above. Because that whole group instruction, I think I've talked about it before, was that whole group one-tier instruction doesn't work for everybody. So being able to differentiate, and that's one of the things we're looking at moving forward next year as well, is doing some differentiated instruction, professional development with our teachers to really work on, not just our middle kids that we tailor that same level, but hitting our upper group, our lower groups, that all students can grow.
Based either on your own estimates or just based on talking to the other districts, is there a guess as to a percentage of our population that will eventually become accelerated in any one subject?
I don't know if it's based on, on, on a percentage more, or it's, it's more of an individual need. You know, because when we started dealing with this particular subject matter, it seemed like we were being approached by more of a want than more, it was a student need. So we're trying to take that kind of the, the wanting and the need, balance out the other.
We're trying to use objective data to benefit as many kids as we can and give them opportunity. So for example, there's different competitions, and a kid can demonstrate by his performance in the class and by a specific interest that he may have, say it's a history bowl, that he should have an opportunity to be able to participate in that as well as student in the gifted program. Similarly, if I have a kid, through scheduling, who has a tough time with signature classes, let's say it's a kid that thinks, sure, I can take statistics, Mr. Cozy, but I could also take French four and balance out within that schedule. Maybe they're all at the same period, but if it's okay with the parents, and then the kid can take, you know, I'm going to spend three days a week in this class, and I'm going to spend two days a week in this class, alternate in subsequent weeks, provided I can keep my grade up. So I think there's other examples that I think would benefit the general student body, to get them an opportunity. Let's say we have a student who progresses through the science department, say, well, you know, I'd rather take physics two, or, you know, I could exceed in my math course. What are we putting in place? A lot of times we talk about differentiation of instruction for kids who are struggling academically. What we're really talking about here is differentiation of instruction for kids who are successful. And how are these discussed, and what opportunities, and it's not necessarily open to a kid who's not given, but a kid who works darn hard and a kid who has an interest and have the proclivity to do the work and get ahead. And I think we should make that opportunity for them. And those are some of the things that other districts moving into the twenty-first century are dealing with. And I think schools can be the same way as it was when we went to school, you know, back in twentieth century. I, I think that's problematic. It's not doing our kids a service. So one of the things that I asked Rachel and Ed to talk about and look at some of the best practices other districts are doing, Quaker Valley being one of them, is how can we provide more opportunity for kids, being a small school and wanting to get out of that box. And that's what we're proposing.
We're looking to implement this next year? Yes.
What's curious about is if you're expecting one or two kids per class on average, or is this twelve kids per class in a year? So what is, what are the other districts seeing as far as number of kids after a year or two of implementing this? How many kids actually?
Comes with awareness. The more there, that is out there and students are aware that this is an option to them, it does increase. So it may, it will start probably as one or two per class they would take, and then it could grow, like, say, from the twelve. It just depends on the awareness and what, with the students that they were able to qualify under these criteria, how that moves forward.
And you had brought up a current condition where you have a second grader doing a third grade work.
Yes.
Is, and if the elementary level is a little different because you're not, you know, you're not jumping around with classes, do you have a second grader leaving during math's period, do they leave and go to the third grade class instead of the band?
Yes, and then they come back. We also have a few students that are kind of crossing over. I wouldn't say it's full acceleration from, from sixth to seventh grade.
Sixth to seventh, there's a, there's a couple.
But they're also taking the sixth grade math, but we're also bringing them up here for pre-algebra. So, you know, once they, once they kind of meet the pre-algebra requirements, they'll still take the sixth grade P.S.S.A., they'll still earn the material that they've got for the seventh grade, and next year as, as seventh graders, they'll probably be taking up the one. They'll be taking in those goals.
Any other questions? We'll move on to the, the rest of our, of our meeting. Move on to the minutes section. I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the March nineteenth, twenty-eighteen Finance Committee meeting, the March nineteenth regular voting meeting, the minutes of that meeting, and the meeting of the April ninth, special meeting for general purposes as presented. Another motion for those three sets of meetings to be approved. Move to our second.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion. If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Question carries. I'll report that we had an executive session prior to this meeting where we discuss personnel matters, negotiations, and real estate. I'll now turn to Dr. Pyfer for the administrative reports.
Thank you. I'd like to report we are in our second week of P.S.S.A. testing in the district, and so far things have been going very well. We've only had two students in the whole district adopt it out of the exam this year, which always helps us with our participation rates. We're pretty, very well pleased with that, and paying building principals, Mr. Mantich, and teachers for getting that together. And it's, it's something we all have to deal with, but I think the kids are pretty well-conditioned at this point. And, you know, they understand, we don't have a lot of kids storming in here causing disruptions, being unruly during the testing. One of the things I want to touch base, we're putting our budget together, is we anticipate that we're going to get a reduction in our Title, in our federal fundings, Title I, Title II, and Title IV. This is based on the two thousand sixteen census, and we won't get the final figures. We hope we'll get them at the Pennsylvania Federal Programs Conference coming up in May. This year, in Title I, for example, if Title I services go to kids who are economically disadvantaged, we're able to utilize services to provide those kids with an academic need and give them some more one-to-one instruction in programs. So currently, we've received six hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred fifty-two dollars in Title I monies. We anticipate if it's the cut by the full fifteen percent, then next year we'd be looking at five hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. Title II monies, and we're not sure if Title II's can be cut entirely, we use that for class size reduction. If they eliminate Title II, that's seventy-four thousand, a hundred and two dollars we would not have. And for Title IV, which we've used for educational quality, and we've helped offset some formal language classes with that, the reduction there, if they eliminated, would be fourteen thousand, six hundred twenty-one. So, we'll know more come to the Pennsylvania Federal Programs Conference, what those figures are completely, but that's preliminary fire across the bow that they're giving us. The other items, Mr. Locker and I today, you know, we continue to look at our school safety procedures, emergency response, we're putting trainings into place for next year. Mr. Locker and I were at the intermediate today for an active shooter presentation about state police, and we're taking some of the suggestions that they put in there into our plan, and we'll be having a subsequent meeting with the police later on this semester. The police have been very helpful with us with proactive communication. One of the things that we're looking, that we purchased is an app that we're going to be able to put on employees' phones. It'd almost be like a nine-one-one emergency call, call first responders, thinking that if somebody's on a playground and they don't have access to a phone, or they're outside, we'll be able to utilize the app on the phone. Mr. Robella walked in, was instrumental in, you know, going forward with Rave, in that program. So that's another layer we're going to have in place as well. One of the things that we're working on for the summer, it's, that's a little different, and I had to acknowledge former board member Antris Hart for having the idea and putting me in touch with Lysy Matope, that I probably just butchered his name, but we're developing a South African student youth exchange. We'll have eight students here as part of a larger itinerary, where they're going to go to New York City, Washington DC, Philadelphia in the summer, and setting up some programs there, but they'll be here with our program, and we're going to talk to Danny Cheskis to talk about having some kids come in this summer, and we're going to show them our building, take a day to go to Parkway, the Energy Innovation Center, and do some other regional things in the area, including the Pirates game, and maybe Kennywood and so forth for those kids, and then have a ceremony for them in the evening. So those are the things we're getting in place. Then the idea would be, we're in the process of developing a trip for our kids and other kids in the area to go to South Africa in twenty nineteen. So that, that's pretty exciting. We had a formal meeting today to finalize some details, but we'll see more about that coming forward. And Darby Copeland and I were also at the Energy Innovation Center last week, and we're looking to continue monies to continue with programs with them. We put in an application, do a presentation at Penn State in the fall with Norbert Guske from the Energy Innovation Center on career development and public school partnerships. And in the last three years of the Education Innovation Center, this year we've had students present to us on the wind turbine, which is the full-scale, not the full-scale, but the working wind turbines in place at the Energy Innovation Center. Year before that, the kids worked on a project where they developed different menu options, and year before that, they worked on the initial design of the building. And what's nice about that program is utilize, kids may not normally get exposure or get attention, because they may not necessarily be in advanced placement programs, but these kids are every bit as motivated, as intuitive, and academically talented, and looking at different avenues for like CAD design and collaboration, and they work with other schools who are part of the consortium at Parkway. South Fayette was involved, Short Tears Valley, and Bethel Park, and everybody that's in our juncture with Parkway. So that's a pretty exciting opportunity. We're going to be sure we get the continuation with that program of funds for next year. So that's what I have. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, at this time, I'd like to go to, I'm going to, I'm going to skip over you a little bit, Dr. Randler, and go to Mr. Jezwick to talk about the switchgear. Switchgear, if those who've been here last week, we talked about the need for some, from the trade, energy operation services, savings for our budget, and we talked about some fiscal plan, capital projects. One of them was the switchgear, which is our, our electrical panels, which are original to the building. And as we talked about the program, and we initially approached upon, we approached upon with zero-sum balance, so that the savings that we perceive balance out the initial investment that we needed the bond for through the energy costs. The most immediate things you would see would be things like switchouts for LED lights and our lighting, some heating and so forth. One of the things we also have to look at is our, the switchgear, our electric panels are original to the building. As Michelle Herman reminded me, next year we're going to be looking at the fiftieth anniversary of the opening of this building, sixty-eight, sixty-nine. So, the equipment is fifty years old, and frankly, it's a safety concern with that equipment. We've had it in one, our switchgears are in two different locations, and you really almost have to replace both of them at the same time, because if you have newer wiring in, it's mixed, full wiring is a cause for a shock or surge that could damage our equipment. But to do that, we have to increase the bond. Chris is going to talk a little bit about increasing the bond at this point. Chris, I believe the original price that we looked at last week was three point four million on the left. Little column shows if we split it up, again, if we split it up, you're looking at finding new wiring with old wiring.
Most likely, with discussions with our facility manager, it will limit the life of the, life of the asset in the switchgear, just because the interaction, it's not a good mix if you can afford doing it. So.
And then the last column is if we can replace it all at once. And replacing it all at once, you know, we save money by doing it all at one time. If we drag it out or postpone it, the need isn't going to go away, the need's only going to get worse, and we're going to want to pay more for it down the road.
And that was our facility manager's recommendation. If we do it, he feels it would be more do it all versus with a part of it. So, everybody's seen these numbers, at least on the board, where, you know, our goal was zero-sum project with everything with the energy saver. We wanted to limit our payments as much as possible. So when you see this, that's, with the train, the understanding is, they gave us a number. They said, you know, you're going to save this much on all your energy savings, all your utilities. So, that's a first year savings when this project goes in. I believe the second year, they said we would only pay one payment for that year. So there's, there's also a savings of eighty-two, eighty-two thousand dollars. Then as we start getting in and actually paying some money on, on this project, we're down to thirteen, thirteen dollars in savings, so it's about even. And then as you can see, once payments really kick in, we have about two thousand twenty-one, two, well, I would consider five hundred thirty-two dollars pretty much even, two thousand twenty-seven, where we're going to be on yet where we're paying money out. Now, we would still have to pay the whole, with everything, but those energy savings, that's the offset. So once we hit to two thousand twenty-nine, we're back in the positive again, where the energy savings will outweigh. So once we hit to 2029, we're back in the positive again, where the energy savings will outweigh the bond payments at that point.
And Chris, if I could just, I think, just, I'll shortcut just for a second. In the board, the board last meeting approved the first column, so column D.
Yes, we approved that one.
But I think we're all sensitive to making sure that we're providing the district with what it needs. And if you're saying you need the switchgear, I think everyone would be supportive of that. The only caveat would be that if you're, if you and Gary and Dennis are recommending going to column F and at that expense level, then the simple solution is that if you're committing, that you'll be able to reduce the operating budget by the delta between columns D and F. And if you'll commit to that, then I think we'll approve the, we might approve the, thank you for the look, Chris, I appreciate it. Bring me back to reality. And we might be, we might be very open to approving that as long as we're getting a commitment that you'll find a way to reduce the operating budget by that, by that amount.
Well, I know, we all know the situation we're in. We all know with what we have coming up salary expense-wise with Peasars and everything. So those, those are real costs that are going to be out there. So, you know, we can work as much as possible with it to see where we can. At this moment, I can't give an absolute guarantee that that number will be in shape. We'll keep building towards that. But it's going to be elimination of other projects through the districts like general, such as some construction, some things to be repaired. But as we get into it, as Dennis said, you know, the best way to go would be to do this all at once. I don't think he really felt there was too much of a way to do half of a project, but that's his call. So, you know, as you can see, the numbers get higher. The things I can sell you on, on this project with it is as we go down, here's our total payout. So if we just do the energy project, we're going to have $381,000 in savings by the time this is all said and done.
And then we'll continue to accrue savings every year after that, right?
Right, right. As long as the life of the project goes with everything in it. Now, one thing you have to look at here on the final project in F, where we'd add a whole million dollars to do the switchgear. The switchgear is $1 million. So, okay, we do have the savings, but if you look at it this way, that switchgear with the energy project would cost us, the cost of the entire project would be $976,000. So that's over a 20-year at least. So the way, one way I kind of look at this is based on that, so we build this into the project. We have a million dollar, million dollar switchgear. You said it, you know, it is a safety hazard at this point. The value of that with the energy saver, we're down to nine, what we will pay over the lifetime of that is $976,000 replacing that. So that's below that million dollar cost of it, which, you know, you eliminate with the interest and such. It's the best value we're going to get at it is if we do it right now. Now, we have to figure out how to, how to go about, how to work this into the budget. Fortunate thing is, we're not, we're only paying $41,000 out in 2020. We'd be up to 127 at that point. So that's something we will have to work on, salary projections. There are added expenses. We'd have to work around other construction costs. It, it would be, it would be a tight decision, but as we talked about other, you know, situations, we're in a position where we have to distinguish need from one. So if that switchgear goes in two or three years, we have to pay a whole nother bond issuance. And I, I'm not the expert on when it's going to go, but, you know, we have to pay another bond issuance, more financing fees. Where, like I said, if we wrap this into that project, we're getting this million dollar switchgear and we're only paying $976,000 out on the whole, whole big picture. So, and as the time value of money goes, if you can finance over that 20 years, that amount's going to go down each year hopefully unless something very crazy happens in our world. So, you know, that, that, I think that's the best way to look at it, is the opportunity cost. Because where are we at if that switchgear, something major happens with it in two to three years? It's going to cost us more, the financing's not going to be as reasonable. So I think it's tough to say where are we going to put in this? We, we have to find it, but if we go on three years, it's going to be a much more expensive project than, once again, we're in a need versus one situation, so.
But as, but as true as that is, but I don't want to overlook the fact that we're dealing with a safety hazard. We've got an equipment that's 50 years old where the current has burned through the metal door. And then people are afraid of shock if they utilize it. And knowing that, if we have a safety accident, somebody gets seriously injured, it's going to come back and now we notice a safety hazard existence that could do some real physical harm to the person and we didn't do anything about it. And that's what worries me. As much as the finance part, I'm worried about the safety of our employees. And I think we have to take a look at it and maybe eat it a little bit because the consequences, I think, could be dire if we don't.
And maybe some of the other things is, say that switchgear just went down. I spoke to Dennis, I mean, the school would have to shut down for a certain period, so.
So Chris, again, I think all of us are very supportive of replacing the switchgear. The question is how, are, absolutely.
Okay, so one of the things is, my understanding is the switchgear is kind of like the roof, it's not an energy saver?
No, that, that's why when we did this, when I put this three, three columns together.
Remember when they gave us the scenarios? They ran the train, the F-39 things on a 20-year, but then the roof was on a 24-year. So would this switchgear be like a 24-year or a 20-year?
You'd have to work it into the 20 also.
Okay.
And we use the same energy savings through all this as we used in the other one because there's no real energy saver. The only bonus with this is you can wrap it in to the project, if you get the construction project as it is now. The costs as they are now, and as we know, construction costs go up, so.
And so this is, this is looking at stuff over time. If there is a year that we become flush with cash for some reason. We just saw how unpredictable it is. We took a big hit, there could be years where something happens. Like there's an alum who dies and we get like $20 million. So in that, is there a penalty for paying early, so like in year 10 or year 8, we have extra cash? Can we pay towards the principal?
I would have, when I spoke to Jamie, she said we do have the ability to pay extra onto the principal.
Okay.
But I would like the number of chat before.
You can call the bonds after five years.
Yes, and get new interest rates if the rates are higher.
I think that's what Melissa's answer would be. Anytime after that fifth year, you can call all or some of the bonds. So if you want to make an extra payment, so to speak, you don't have to call all of the outstanding bonds. You can call any portion of them to use that extra money and draw down or nothing doing, that's all. One thing, and I, look, I'm no expert in financing. I was, I've retired long ago. But you, you are dealing today in near record lows and that's been holding for a couple of years. Chris would know better than I, I think, but there is no guarantee that if you go out and finance this two, three, four years from now, that the rates that you're looking at today with this bond issue will halt. The cost of money could definitely go up. Yes, it could go down, but you can't stay at record lows forever.
And when you're at an all-time low, it only goes up. And we've started to kind of itch up a little bit too, so.
Right, so this is why I was asking these questions, because I'm kind of past that. Like, I'm understanding, you know, liability, safety, it's something that we need. And this being really the only option for such a big project. And then it's really us just over the next year's managing so that we can make that operating deficit smaller, so we can make these payments. I just, that's why I was just asking these technical questions, because it's understood, like, it's something.
Yeah, I'm very conservative with things. That's why I can't, I won't sit there and tell you, yes, we can absolutely, you know, it's absolutely positive how we get around it. We can work towards it, but it's an operating cost right now. That, I think that's the biggest thing is, if it goes in two or three years, help, the roof's a little bit different with the way Dennis discussed that. But that, that's a little bit different, I think, with the switchgear, being the time that, if anything, would go down, being 50 years old. The issues we have had with that.
Again, I think we're all supportive of it. I think the discussion last time was, when we go through with this bond, we're committing ourselves to a, an annual payment and it removes that flexibility that we've had the last couple of years to pick and choose things and move needles and dials up and down a little bit. So as long as you and Dennis and Gary are comfortable, we, I assume we might consider doing this. If you all assert your comfort level that you'll make the budget work for the next three or four years to make sure we can get through periods when those are our required payments on a bond. So if you're, the same requirements that we had six months ago are going to be present for three years. And if you're comfortable, you're going to make the operating budget work with this new higher level of debt load then.
I, I think absolutely, our, always our goal is always to make the operating budget work and to eliminate any budget deficit that may arise. I, I really commend you, Chris, because you've really come in with fresh eyes and really attacked it using, I'd be generous if you were using state-of-the-art, up-to-date technology to sort of break things down for us and present it out of the book of accounts, which, you know, is, is pretty, is pretty complicated. So I think this really helps the board and the general public to see what we're looking at and how to plan ahead with that. And same with projections and getting added information from the board.
Ford, what, what, what questions? What, what, what's your?
I mean, any thoughts on that?
George, Kelly.
I just wish the issue of this support, the discussion came up earlier as we're deciding about.
I agree.
Because I mean, it makes more sense if the horror, danger, I don't even think I'm wrong, sorry, but, you know, this, this works. I think it works. Because we have to. It is what it is.
It's a necessity, really.
Like I said, it's a need versus a want, I think, in this situation. And the fallout you can get from something bad happening with that far outweighs, you know, what we would be paying per year.
Plus the downtime.
Yes. Well, I wouldn't say it just went down, Dennis. You would have to ask Dennis for accurate, like, so what are we out for a week? I mean, David will, probably longer than that. By the time they get equipment in, do the repair, I mean, that's a massive project, so.
And like technology, we've only added two current with more use of devices.
I hate spending that money. That drives me crazy, so I'm thinking more on the need basis.
So what, what we are, or something, what steps are we going to have to follow to now hold this into what we just passed and did at our last meeting?
Well, I was going to jump in on that, so.
We're on the same page.
As we pass.
Oh, it's on the table two terms.
The motion we passed at the last meeting was a not to exceed motion, up to $5 trillion. So we don't technically need any more action, official action with the board. Now, the board wants to take action tonight to authorize up to the 4.4 or to authorize the, doing the switchgear project. That's fine, we can do that, but we would not be required. However, what we do need to do, if that's the direction the board wants to go, is we've got to get that information to our financial people sooner than later. Because there is going to come a time when they're not going to be able to add to it. They're out, they're already working on the, the official statements, the preliminary official statements. And Jamie is out marketing to investors and so on, trying to, you know, set up with the terms and conditions of your bond issue. Now, obviously, if you want to push the sale back into June, you can do that, but, hold on, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to go to that step. You won't have the money then to do this project over the summer. So I don't want to say tonight is a drop dead night on this decision, but it's pretty close.
I seem to recall them telling us that tonight is the drop dead night to make our decisions.
Well, they're, I, I don't care if they say that, I said, I don't. Yeah, if you're going to do it, tonight's the night. If, you know, if you get past tonight, you're, other than doing something miraculously, you're probably, you're not going to be able to accomplish it.
And we, and we have to remember, right, this, this isn't a bell whistle or something, hey, we get this out of it. It's an operational thing. So, you know, that, that's really the, much more fun to spend it on something that the kids can see and use more of or resist. Okay, our electric's fine. Our whole system's fine, I can run it. So that's the unfortunate thing about a project like this. But it's that, once again, what are, yeah, I, I think what we really need to think of, what are the bad outcomes? What are the negatives if we don't replace this?
Let me quickly ask, Bill, my recollection is that we approved bond counseling to go out for $5 million. The project, I think we approved at 3.8 or whatever the number was. Do we need to approve it and add into that project?
Eventually you're going to have to do that, yes. But, and, and we could do that preliminarily tonight, but.
Isn't that with train specifically?
I'm sorry, Ms.?
Isn't that just telling train? Wasn't that specifically to train?
That was specifically train, but we didn't authorize going and doing anything beyond the train project. We couldn't do the roof, we couldn't do the switchgear, so. But as far as the bond itself is concerned, direction to Chris, we'd get direction to Jamie and just. As I said, if we want to do a motion tonight to proceed with the switchgear project, we can do that. But eventually we're going to have to do it more specific, what we're doing, you know, what specifically is involved there. And I'm, I'm not in a position to be able to, you know, inspect that out.
Do you need a strong, strong pull vote from the board to offer?
To be clear, the board officers under that bond to exceed are authorized to take it up. I think probably the safest thing to keep the record clear is to do a motion that would authorize the, the switchgear project at a, at a cost of a million dollars, not exceed.
Is it roughly a million, is it exactly a million?
From what everything I've been told, it's worth right at that million mark. I would have to confirm that though.
To go in and confirm the final entails and proceed with the switch.
And to direct the board officers to increase the bond issue according.
We would do that.
Correct.
Is there any board member who is, has concerns they'd like to raise questions, further questions on that topic? And address the board under the business.
Thank you, Mr. Jezwick. I'd like to turn now to Dr. Randler.
Just want to update you guys. Our career fair, as you know, I've talked about it before, is May 23rd. As of right now, we have 55 vendors willing to participate. Really excited. We were hoping for about 60, so that's a really good number. We have a wide variety of, we've got 16 different career clusters that we're looking at, as well as the military branch. So we have a really nice wide area to kind of pass our net, to kind of get off the ground and running. Thank you, Chris, for being with somebody else today. So we're really excited. And then also too, our transition coordinator, Jerry Pate, and I have been working with Goodwill for the past, he's been working for the past couple of years. And we've really looked at changing some of that relationship that we have with them. Goodwill has provided for us some vocational opportunities for our students with disabilities as well as providing for in-house curriculum and other opportunities once the students then graduate and are OVR eligible. One of the projects we've been using with them in the past has been Project Search. It is where we have a couple of students that have run through that program where they go into the hospital that's partnered with Mercy. And they do, will go through a nine-week rotation of the different areas. They'll go in through delivery, they'll go to the, in the receiving, deliver all the products that need to be dispersed at the hospital. They'll go through food service. They'll also work on the floors with the nurses and run through that rotation. This year that is new is the Goodsteps program, which is part of Goodwill. And Goodsteps is a program where they come into your building. They offer curriculum, it's a six-week curriculum on transitional skills. And then we'll also do job placement for those students outside for a 90-hour paid work experience. And they get, I believe it's $12 an hour as their first part-time job. And that's a 90-hour paid experience and it's paid through the state's OVR program. And I'm not sure if you guys are familiar, it's called WEO, Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. And it's through the PETS, which is Preemployment Transition Services. That's one of the regulations and legislations that came out about two years ago. It was additional funding that went to OVR, then the lower branch out to Goodwill. So this year is the first year we've been able to partner with Goodwill on the Goodsteps program. And we have about 12 students participating. And then we found out, it was Friday, the first, they received placement at the Goodwill in Robinson. So we have seven students are going to be taken up employment through that program. And so they'll be able to get their job, their job experience, rotate through their rotations as well. And then have a job coach and be able, marketable when they graduate. So I'm excited with that program. I'm hoping they're going to expand it for more opportunities. And as Dr. Piper said, our ESL population is, we've kind of slowed with enrollments. We're holding steady at 56 students, which is pretty much where we've been. We've had a few students move in now, but it's. Um, we've had a few students move and now, but it's been a very, we've slowed down on that from. And special education numbers, we are at two hundred and fifty-three, which has been kind of holding steady as well. So, that's what I have.
I'd like to go now to the principals, and, uh, sorry, Mrs. Carlson.
I have newsletters and calendars for you, but basically, I think Ed stole my thunder when he said it is PSSA time, and that is what we've been focusing on last week and this week. Last week were our EL, sorry, I was skipped you, our ELA, PSSAs. Our students did a great job, everything ran smooth, and they worked really hard. If you came in our building, you would have been very proud of them. Today was math, went even smoother, and next week will be our science PSSAs for our fourth grade students. Uh, then hopefully we'll be back to normal with our schedules and our routines just in time for the end of the year. So, you'll see in the newsletter, there are some great things happening. We have our Jump Rope for Heart coming up that Mr. Figarelli plans. We have the assembly coming up in May. We also have April as Artisan Awareness Month, so we collect money and we hang puzzle pieces on our wall, and it gets donated to the Artism, uh, FOT Society. If you want to donate money, feel free to send money into Crafton. I believe Carnegie does it as well, so the amount is in there, and they put your name on a little puzzle piece. It's all about PSSAs, uh, PSSAs, more PSSAs, and the one cool thing that I wanted to share with you is, PTA is putting together this Gift for Time. It's Gift of Time, it's a fundraiser that the students are going to participate in. All the teachers gave an idea about different ways that they donate their time to the students. So, for example, they got to shine with their different, like, interests. So, Miss Suda Ross is donating, like, an hour of drum lessons. Uh, I like to eat, so I'm donating lunch with principal. I don't have any other skills, so I'm just kidding. But they love that pizza. Uh, someone's doing, like, breakfast and cartoons, so you get to go to, I think it's first grade, and have breakfast and watch cartoons before school starts. So, it's not supposed to be about money, we're just, you know, find ways that we can just donate our time. So, they get to donate a dollar and a ticket will be pulled out, and that's the person who wins whatever co-activity they came up with. So, I wanted to share that, because Miss Herman gave us, or some shout-outs to the trib, and I talked to the reporter from the Tribune Review today to, to share some of the great things, we'll be able to share some of our story. Um, I think that's it. Sorry, she's testing this one. Any questions?
My daughter loves the donate time thing, she's sweet.
So, I should put, she can?
She's got her.
Favorites are.
I'd like to go back with Mr. Lock.
At the junior high school, we're also in the midst of, yes, to say, testing, and I wanted to thank Mr. Mantich, who's really taken the lead on that and helped us run a fine orchestrated machine, it's, uh, done very smoothly. Simultaneously, speaking of time and donating time, we've created that space upstairs for kids to have time of their own to explore their passions. And today was the first, last week we had the students, uh, have a, a day of tours through the shop and ran through the social studies classes, and today was the first day that was open. And I am very proud and excited to say, there were one hundred and eleven students in the shop. And these students, the thing that I found very interesting, and I'm looking at a data report here right now, is of the students, uh, about sixty percent were from the junior high, uh, which serves as one of our areas of focus, is the strength of the transitioning program, and forty percent were from the senior high school. And when they sign in, they have to, uh, identify what area they're going to work on. And all of the stations had a pretty even distribution of attention, uh, which was really exciting. And, uh, for example, twenty-one percent were in the gaming sta, the gaming station, um, thirteen point five percent were in the board gaming station, that was, uh, I saw some children playing chess when I got to this work this morning. Uh, the nail station had fourteen four-point percent of the students. Uh, the recording studio was a huge hit, eighth period, when I went up there today, it was, had about seven or eight students in it. So, the plan is, uh, the first day, very successful, and it makes it exciting, and the kids seem to be buzzing about it. And I want to thank you once again for the support in this as we, uh, went after that. And that's, and now, we're just getting ready for May Madness, some people call it March Madness, but I say May Madness at a high school, uh, with all the activities coming up for the closures of the year. But, uh, we are strong, so it's great. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
I had a couple of parents ask if there was going to be any opportunity for the public to tour that space.
Thank you for reminding. That also, as Quark's, uh, reminder, uh, April twenty-third is the Taste of Carlington, the Education Foundation is hosting, and we're hoping to have some subtle displays of student work from the shop at the Taste of Carlington. On May twenty, it's either the first or second, we're having a Remake Learning Day, uh, which is in partnership with the Create Labs and the Gravel Foundation, and that group of people, and we have from one to four PM, and open to the public tour of the space. So, they can get a, maybe an hour worth of seeing kids in there, and then, uh, the, the other couple hours, then it can be, uh, people, and they'll be after school, and then people tour.
Will that be on the website?
Yes, ma'am.
What was that day?
I believe it's May twenty-first, but I, I, it's either the twenty-first or the twenty-second. The calendar's pretty crowded, like, ever, so I apologize.
Any other questions? Real quick, so, I love what everyone did up there, I know there's like a dozen people or more that were involved in that, and it's really turned out great. My kids are all excited to, 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 to one, they all said that, they were all kind of interested, that they were kind of indifferent, when they saw it, they were all impressed and couldn't leave this space in person. Uh, and I think they answered questions great. Now that we have this awesome space, what can we do with it that we haven't already thought of? What other ways can we engage the community? Can we have small summer camps, just groups of ten people that can focus on one of the stations, can bring in kids, can bring in adults? It opens up a ton of possibilities, so I don't want to overwhelm you, but maybe plant that seed and start working with your colleagues and planting seeds with them, and just seeing how we can leverage that, that resource, that asset. So, I'm excited. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you. Now, that concludes the administrative reports.
We'll look at our committee reports, um, with Director Apple not being here tonight. George, any update for Parkway? Have you been able to attend recently? I'm not sure.
Sure, this, uh, this month's meeting, the meeting is coming Wednesday, but last month, uh, we, we tried to gather names of architects for the, apparently some were school districts actually that, you know, I'm sorry. And we're getting bids on the roof for the main building. We should be opening the bids at, at the main meeting, we'll choose by the jury. We spoke in the last meeting at the old water line, it's from around nineteen sixty-five. Wouldn't you know, during the Easter break, the line broke. But luckily, it was during the break, uh, they only lost two school days afterwards, and, um, and this break was between the T-track and the main road. They were really concerned about the new pressure going through it, causing other breaks, because this is a, or this is a fifty-year, plus fifty-year line. Uh, but once they put on the pressure, everything was fine. Graduation will be June sixth, and there are no graduates regarding.
How about, uh, Pat Fund, any brief updates on Pat Fund?
That, that was the Pat Fund.
Sorry, that was Park.
No, this, that was, that, Park.
I know, but he's the alternate, are you the alternate?
But I was, I think we were on the road from New York City.
Because I was confused if the update for Parkway sounded a lot like the Pat Fund.
I, I, bottom line, right? No, that was Pat Fund.
Okay, thank you.
Pretty, yeah, Parkway tonight is their National Technical Honors Society induction. Rachel Catuso is in attendance from the district. Uh, they also have their summer camp that they're getting in place for elementary and middle school kids, uh, to go out and check what they may want to see, if they want to take, uh, consider career technical careers. Uh, and again, discussions that we had with the superintendents to move forward with additional funding for the Energy Innovation Center partnership, uh, and provide that, and Darby's also, procedure, let me rephrase that. Darby's also continuing to look at the replacement of the HVAC system over there, it's pretty outdated, and he's working on adding a diesel mechanics program, so he's been approaching different, uh, private manufacturers for that. So, that's still, that fund will not be up in place for our kids for next year. Shop space is there, but we gotta get, you know, with that program, they try to get some donated parts and engines for a specific program. So, that's about it for Parkway. Uh, the superintendent's meeting there recently was at the Energy Innovation Center last week, and, uh, we'll have the next Parkway meeting in the coming of May.
Any updates on Shasta for us?
Yes, as a matter of fact, with Shasta, we have our very own alumnus, Connor Richardson, will be the future speaker at the Shasta Student Award Ceremony, which will be Saturday, April twenty-eighth, at South Clinton Mall. Uh, our two students here represented for their involvement in the Energy Innovation Center, Sean Setting and, uh, Jad, Jett, they will be our honored students there, uh, and it, and that's a, it's a good event. And Shasta's quickly coming to a close. Uh, we have one more meeting with the superintendent in May after the April meeting, and then we'll plan ahead for eighteen nineteen.
Thank you. Dr. Simsek, any updates on PSSA?
Um, just a few things, um, just to follow up, when we talked last time about the government of the school safety task force, just want to report, they had their first meeting, seemed like there was a lot of feedback on the mental health aspect of things, so that seems to be a lot of relief, and hoping that they can focus some of their efforts. Um, as far as what's going on in the state, the PA House Education Committee has, um, approved the following, House Bill five sixty-four, which requires students to take an assessment in U.S. history, government, and civics, so that it is going to be a requirement. However, they're allowing some flexible provisions now. So, it's requiring school entity to administer a locally developed assessment regarding those items. Uh, also, House Bill one two two eight allows students to wear protective clothing and sunscreen without a prescription. Yay! So, I had to bring that, considering our conversation about, you know, what's, what's allowed there, so that's about it.
Thank you. Any other questions or any committee reports? If not, we'll move on. Under the miscellaneous section of our agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve number one, additions to the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen conference and field trip requests as submitted. Number two, elect William L. Cooper to the Board of Trustees for the Western Region of the Allegheny County Schools Health Insurance Consortium for a two-year period effective April thirtieth, twenty eighteen. I have a motion for those two items. Thank you, George. Go up second.
Second.
Move second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Under section two, finance, we have five items. I'll entertain a motion to approve number one, the March twenty eighteen bills in the amount of seven hundred thirty-one thousand, seventy-one thousand, repeat that, seven hundred thirty-one thousand, seventy-one dollars and thirty-four cents. Number two, resolution number two zero one eight dash one, hereby adopting the operation budget for the South Central Area Special Schools Committee Pathfinder for the school year of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, as set forth in the proposed budget, in the amount totaling one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Number three, the March twenty eighteen Athletic Fund Report with an ending balance of thirteen thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. Number four, March twenty eighteen Activities Fund Report with an ending balance of ninety thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty cents. And number five, the Food Service Management Renewal Year Con, Food Service Management Renewal Year Cost Reimbursable Contract, it's a state form, for the period of June first, twenty eighteen through June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, pending approval from the Department of Education, Division of Food and Nutrition. Do I have a motion for those five items?
So, move.
Move second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. And next year, I will practice that before I try to say it. Section number three, personnel, we have seven items. I'll entertain a motion to approve number one, reassign Carrie Gallagher to the position of Junior Senior High School Guidance Office Secretary, a Class One position in terms of the SCA Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Number two, award the position of Systems Administrator, Technology Assistant to Angela Zanone at a salary of forty-five thousand dollars, under the terms of the SCA Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Number three, award the position of Director of Technology to Joe Riddella at a salary of seventy-five thousand dollars, under the terms of the Act ninety-three agreement. Number four, reassign Mary Straka to the position of one-to-one personal.